It is 6:31, let's rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vocal, Craig here.
I'm here.
Dolphin here.
Schneider here.
Harvey here.
Yurgis here.
All present, I have in front of me proper verification of meeting notices being posted. Brings us to the agenda, are there any changes on the agenda this evening?
No, there are none.
Here you go, I look for a motion on the agenda.
I'll so move for approval.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Yurgis to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. We'll roll right into the action of approving the minutes. We'll start with the regular meeting from Wednesday, June 11th, in the open session. Any noted changes, corrections here?
I also move for approval. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor, Minister Craig, seconded by Mr. Dolphin to approve the meeting minutes for the regular meeting on Wednesday, June 11th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a 7-0 vote, takes us to the minutes for the regular meeting on Wednesday, June 11th, in the closed session. Any noted changes here? Sorry?
No questions.
I'll move to approve those.
Okay, motion on the floor by Mr. Dolphin, seconded by Mr. Yurgis to approve the minutes for the regular meeting on Wednesday, June 11th, in the closed session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Brings us to the action of the minutes from the special meeting on June 16th, in the closed session. Any noted changes here? One correction on the bottom of the page, you missed in the, I believe the motion carried on a voice vote, last sentence of the page, 7-0, and I believe it was 8:41 PM.
Okay, yep, I see it.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the special board meeting from Monday, June 16th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion on the floor by Mr. Yurgis, seconded by Mr. Craig to approve the special meeting minutes from June 16th, in a closed session, with the single noted correction. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a 7-0 vote, and that brings us to the action of the minutes from the special meeting on June 24th, in the open session. Any noted changes, corrections here?
I'll move to approve those minutes.
And I will second.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Kwame, seconded by Mr. Craig to approve the special meeting minutes from June 24th, in the open session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Moving right along, we'll get into-
I'm sorry, just hold on one second. The, um, yeah, nevermind. Nope, I have one question. Just drop it.
Uh, moving into administrative reports, we will start with Mr. Bartelt to talk about the co-curricular handbook, and you have the floor, Mr. Bartelt.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Oh yeah, we can hear you.
Awesome. Must be loud, based on that reaction. Um, so I just wanted to add, with Mr. Brandon Siska starting a week ago, I took the lead. Lynn helped, Ms. Gose helped a little bit as well. Just wanted to do a couple of updates with our co-curricular handbook. You should have the changes in, and you were just a one-page updates, uh, what we've done to our co-curricular book, or what we're proposing for this upcoming school year. Um, I'll just quickly go down the list, we had some small edits, we reorganized it, and actually reduced a lot of the pages up because there were a lot of repeats. We added in boys soccer for this upcoming school year. Uh, we did girls soccer last year, so this year we are adding boys soccer to this same co-op. Updated all of our forms to reflect board policy. Removed some WIAA language that was pretty, um, general, and added in just website links, because we repeat a lot of that stuff within our own handbook. Um, number five, the letter winner details, so we have removed those from our co-curricular handbook, and those go into the individual sport handbooks. So those are the sport handbooks, get handed out to families and athletes, student athletes at the service every season. So each coach has what they have, um, to, in order to be a letter winner, will be in those books. Um, also with moving the D.O.L.A. for our policies, we removed old policies and updated them to our new policies. And then the last change, probably the biggest change, so when it comes to code violations, if a student has a violation, and if they, um, are suspended, let's say for a third of a season, their sophomore year. If they were freshmen and they did not play a winter sport, they didn't play basketball, they cannot join basketball to serve that suspension. So again, they have to, a student would have to play in that sport previous week, the year before, in order to fulfill a violation. If it's a ninth grade student that has a violation, we're not going to count anything against them since they're new to the high school, but this would be for sophomores, juniors, and seniors. And the reason for that is, um, talking with our coaches this year, and, um, Ms. Gose, and also Mr. Siska, sometimes it can be challenging when a student just wants to go join a sport just to serve a suspension and not actually want to play that sport. Uh, it can sometimes be a burden on the coach as just another burden on the team when it's not needed. So, for example, again, if someone didn't play football their freshman year, they can't join football their sophomore year just to serve a suspension so they can play basketball. That would be the biggest change in our co-curricular handbook that we're proposing for this upcoming school year. And I'm just wondering if there's any clarifications on any of those pieces I talked about.
Any questions, board members? Doesn't appear to be shot.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Ms. Zeeman to talk about the curriculum adoption. You have the floor, Christine.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, um, for some reason my camera's not working. But, um, you have in your board packet, um, a proposal for a textbook adoption for writing for the real world, which is a new high school course that was approved, um, earlier this school year. Mrs. Schimmelfitting teaches the course, and in order to do that, she is in need of some textbooks. So you have, um, information about the textbook, but total proposal cost for 25 textbooks and 25 digital licenses, as well as, um, a teacher manual and teacher resources, is $4,137.23. Are there any questions that I can answer on the textbook?
Any questions, board members?
Ms. Zeeman, do you know what the enrollment in that course is for next year?
Um, I believe that currently there's about 20 students, but I am asking for 25 textbooks and 25 licenses in order for us to accommodate for next year, not have to do another purchase if there are more than 20 students.
I read the, uh, entire proposal in the electronic board packet, and I find it, found it was very comprehensive, so I think we all can, we all take, swallow a little hard when we see 4,000 something, but to realize how these books are, and publications come to be, and having a sister who's been involved with that, I heard some of the background stories, so I, uh, I congratulate you for the ricker that went into this, uh, junk proposal at this junction. So I will move for approval.
No, we're not there.
Yep.
Sorry.
Hang on to that thought.
Is there any question about the textbook that I can answer potentially?
Doesn't appear to be, Christine.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we'll turn it over to Ms. Beacon to talk about summer school.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, um, I can't get my internet to work either today, it must be something going on. Um, I don't have anything that's super new, I was on, um, I think summer school went really, really well. Um, the first two weeks Christine took over for me was last week because I was on my sabbatical. Um, but I really think that it went really well, kids were saying really great things about summer school and how much fun they were having, so I think that all the classes that we had and the teachers we had were doing a really nice job. I want to highlight a little bit, um, the basketball camp, I think that that was a big hit. And as far as next year goes, I really want to make sure that we're, we're trying to think of some other camps, maybe a volleyball camp to kind of go with again, like I was talking about earlier. I do think that would be a really great addition to next year. Um, summer school, the other thing I want to highlight is that strength and conditioning class. At first, we, we only had about 20, 40-ish kids, you know, kind of signed up, but they really did a nice job, and it still continues right now. It's happening until I believe July 24th. Um, and they have, you know, almost any kids signed up. Sure, there's about six that don't come, or who have never come, but really regularly they have at least, they're, you know, 30-ish kids that are coming to that strength and conditioning class. So I think that that was a really good addition to our summer school this year. Um, I think the other thing I wanted to talk about too is, I think Sarah, I didn't get to talk to her today, she was off. Um, but Sarah definitely learns how, what, um, reports Suzie uses, and how to make sure that they're right, so that when we're reporting summer school, I really, I believe that we're going to be doing a better job of reporting our minutes and our company kids, and she's been doing a really great job checking all of those reports and really making sure that, that we're doing that right. She didn't, you know, know how to do that until this year, and she's just really jumped right in, like she always does, and is doing a great job, you know, making sure that those reports are accurate, and that's everything that's reported. We'll just check in with Suzie in September just to make sure everything looks right. But, other than that, I think it was a really successful summer school. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions? Doesn't appear to be any. Thank you, Oliver.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Uh, moving to Michelle Armitraut to talk about the seclusion and restraint report. You have the floor, Michelle.
Wonderful, good evening, everybody. You know I like a good visual, so I'm going to present my screen. All right, there we go. All right, so it should be short and sweet. Um, annually, we need to report on our seclusion and restraint numbers for this school year. Just a reminder, the state statute prohibits the use of seclusion or restraint by school staff, uh, except in very limited circumstances where students' behavior presents a clear, present, and imminent risk to the physical safety of students and/or school staff, and it is the least restrictive intervention feasible, and this applies to all students, both with and without disabilities. So again, just to ground this, seclusion is the involuntary confinement of a student, apart from other students, in a room or space from which the student is physically prevented from leaving. And then physical restraint is where a restriction occurs that immobilizes or reduces the ability of a student to freely move his or her arms, legs, or head. Obviously, we want to make sure that we are only using this if there is that imminent threat that was mentioned. Uh, before I share the report, just to give the board a reminder, um, staff training and preparedness. Um, our staff are trained in non-violent crisis intervention. Uh, the last couple of years, we focused that training on about 50 staff members. That includes administration, special educators, and repair professionals. So they're the staff that are, uh, more likely to, um, encounter, um, a potential situation. That training really focuses on prevention, de-escalation techniques, and safe physical interventions. If an incident would occur, debriefing sessions, um, happen afterwards, so that we can, you know, reflect and look at what happened, what we might have done differently. Um, and then of course, communication with families occurs immediately. A report is written, and that copy of the report goes to families within three business days. So this year's report is highlighted at the end. This year, uh, in 2425, we had two seclusion instant, uh, instances, and, um, each instance was with a different student, and in those cases, each of those students was a student identified with a disability. And at this past school year, we had one instance of restraint, um, and that was also a student with a disability. We had zero instances of seclusion and restraint, um, at the same time. So that's basically our report, and then of course, including the last four years, so that you can kind of get a picture, um, in total with our district. I would say our staff does a really, really fabulous job with that de-escalation, uh, to help keep our students and staff safe. Any questions about this year's report?
Any questions, board members? No questions, so thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
And we'll turn it over to Susan Daniels to talk on the 2025-2026 budget. You have the floor, Christine.
Hi, guys. I have to be completely honest, I took vacation at the absolute worst time. I, in your packet, you've got the 25-26 preliminary budget. Um, and while I was gone, away from all internet, they passed the 25-27 state budget. They signed that and, um, updated the revenue worksheet, so I feel like I'm giving you out-of-date stuff already. I know it's, you know, always a little out-of-date, but, um, you know, a lot has changed since I, I presented this. Um, but right now, what I've got here is, um, we're up here. For the, uh, 25-26, we've got a total revenue of, um, $12,119,497. And for front 10, um, it expenses of... Just kidding. Going to the back, I'm scrolling, I apologize. Um, revenues of $11,930,870, and the expenses of $119,497. So, estimate right now, at that, that time, about $188,618 loss for the 25-26 school year. Um, that being said, we did, I would get some updated numbers, um, for this aid. Did go down, um, a little bit, um, $131,000. They did release the, uh, kind of one that A4 in France to EPI, but EPI didn't release, release notes to us until around the 14th of July, so I should have those updated, the numbers soon as well. Um, the rest budget, let's have the special end high corporate aid reimbursement rate at 30%. And Bill just passed it at 42% the first year and 45% the second year, so that will be a bit different for our budget. But this one here, I'm heading at 30%. Um, did anyone have any question on that? On the information there, um, some of our revenues for federal dropped off because we had a little lesser luck over in the 24-25 school year, so that dropped off. Um, and I anticipate we, um, new correct, yes, correct that, Michelle, like for last year, is extended two more years, we still have that on there. But it's been flew out of date already. This is reflecting, um, your health insurance increase that we had, Eric, the wages.
Okay, are there any questions, board members? In regards to the budget.
I'll give another update next, with, with all the changes, kind of recaps, you guys can see what's going on. Um, because like I said, I just got back, and there's a lot of information that went out there. That would, you guys need a kind of a better update after this preliminary went past.
Okay. Thank you, Susan. Uh, that concludes administrative reports, and we'll move into the approval of bills and vouchers. We have within your packet, the treasures reports, the listing of disbursements through June 30th, and the district receipts for the month of June. Are there any questions that were unanswered in regards to any of those documents? Hearing none, and for a motion?
Craig will move for approval of all three, in the action, sure. Is there a second?
Yep. Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Yurgis to approve, uh, the treasures reports, the superintendent listing of disbursements through June 30th, and the district receipts for the month of June, and as your whole call vote.
Craig, yes.
Carter, yes.
Dolphin, yes.
Schneider, yes.
Harvey, yes.
Cummings, yes.
Yurgis, yes. All right, the motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Uh, moving to announcements, are there any announcements this evening? Public input. Does anyone wish to provide public input this evening? All right.
I thought of an announcement.
Okay.
I, Scott Carr, and two students, as well as the Director of Personnel from Auburn Ridge, will be on a panel for the Workforce Ready Initiative at Wisconsin Dells, uh, three weeks from now. So Waterloo can take a bit of pride in its efforts made with that initiative thus far, and we will be well represented. I hope, yeah. That's my announcement.
All right, good news. Thank you, Mr. Craig.
You're welcome.
Uh, we will move right into new business. First up is the staff positions, we have two resignations and a number of positions for approval, mostly in regards to the extracurricular staff, and a number of volunteers. Any discussions, any discussion rather, on the staff positions that are presented here for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the staff position as presented.
Second. All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Yurgis, seconded by Mr. Dolphin to approve the staff positions as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Uh, getting action item B, it's the 2025-2026 budget. We just heard from, uh, Ms. Daniels, our business manager, uh, on the changes that, uh, I guess have yet to be implemented, given the state's approval of said budget expenditures. There any further discussion here on this budget? Preliminary version, uh, again, we will get an updated copy as the, the data gets inputted.
I will move to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So we've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Dolphin, seconded by Mr. Craig to approve the preliminary version of the 2025-2026 budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a 7-0. Takes us to action item C, property liability auto, workers' comp, insurance renewals. As your informer packet, uh, explains, the district administration's been working USI on the renewals here. Uh, some good, good information, uh, we're receiving a 30% dividend, and the district was quoted a decrease in premium by $16,814, or 11.5%. So it's up for approval that we, uh, approve the contract for CIC and AM Trust in the amount of $129,870 for 2025-2026 school year. Any discussion on the insurance renewals? Any questions?
Could we move on now?
Yep.
Oh, I was really pleased to see a decrease in the modification rate, so that's good news.
It's very good.
I'll make that motion to approve that $129,870 for... Property liability auto, workers' comp insurance renewals.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Yurgis, seconded by Ms. Kwame to approve the property liability auto and workers' comp insurance renewals, as noted here, to CIC and AM Trust in the amount of $129,870 for the 2025-2026 school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Praise this action item D, student fees and food service pricing. Uh, we've got a list here of the, again in your informer packet, of the 2024-2025 costs or charges, and the proposed charges for 2025-2026. Uh, there are some increases noted here. Also lists, uh, just, again, student fees and food service pricing. Any questions in regards to the increases?
I will move to approve the new fees for next year.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Dolphin, seconded by Ms. Kwame to approve as presented the student fees and the food service pricing for 2025 and 2026. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a 7-0. Brings us to action item D, seclusion and restraint report. Uh, we heard a comprehensive report from Ms. Armitraut detailing, you have detailed information here, uh, regarding the seclusion, annual seclusion and restraint report from 2024-2025. Uh, it's recommended that the report is approved as presented. Is there any discussion or questions that are remain on the report?
I'll move to approve the seclusion and restraint report as presented. Will you please second?
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Kwame, seconded by Ms. Cummings for, to approve the seclusion and restraint report as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a 7-0. Brings us to action item F, co-curricular handbook for 2025-2026. Mr. Bartelt also presented, uh, from the end of the meeting, the, the seven changes or alterations to the co-curricular handbook for 2025-2026. It's recommended to be approved as presented. Is there any discussion in regards to the changes that are proposed?
I have a question about the proposed change number seven, related to student participation for their code violation. related to student participation or their code violation punishment associated with that. So I understand if, let's say, an athlete has not participated in basketball before and chooses to participate in basketball, but have a code violation, their punishment associated with that code violation would not be implemented in basketball. Is that correct?
Yeah, can you...
Yep.
Yeah, so there, it wouldn't... So that's a good question, Susan. So if students ever played basketball before, and they are playing basketball just to serve suspension, their suspension would not count towards basketball, it counts towards their next sport that they play in. So for example, if they track the year before, their suspension would be for track since they played that in years past, since that's what they have done.
And what if then they choose not to participate in track?
Then it would be, then it would be the next, the next sport that they're in. So if they're a sports athlete, for example, they only play volleyball, and they want to join track in the spring, and they never have the sport, or they don't play track, or they don't participate in track, would that just carry over to the following volleyball?
I think the loophole in that, Sean, is a senior, right? So if you've had an athlete that's had a violation in the fall, signs up to play basketball, never played before, doesn't have their code violation enforced in basketball, and then foregoes their track season, they never served their punishment.
Right. Yep.
But they also may need to participate in track, which is presumably a thing they want to do, right?
Well, I think there were instances this year where that, the exact example I gave you, happened. Kids that had a code violation, signed up for basketball, had their punishment instituted in basketball, and then chose not to participate in track, they just opted out of it.
And they were regularly in the path to track, but they were not a basketball athlete.
Correct.
That makes, do we have any idea why they did that?
Nope. Friends that also did basketball, so they joined their friends on the basketball court. I'm just speculating, I don't know the answer. But I know that that happened with seniors this year. I'm just saying, there is a...
You're absolutely right. There's a gray area there.
Yeah, there's a little bit of a loophole in this.
In my belief, there are two gray areas. There's a bigger gray area, which number seven, the update here, is trying to take care of.
Yeah.
And the smaller gray area, which still could come in.
Yeah.
I understand what there'd be...
I mean, I think you're creating a gray area in both spaces, potentially, with the hopes that this class seven eliminates them, but just appreciating that it doesn't completely eliminate them.
Yeah, no, thanks for that feedback. And we've had with other handbooks too, in that area. And I'd say it's about 50/50. Some high schools have that you have to participate in the sport prior. We haven't had that. And this year, we ran into that a little bit. And that's why we are proposing that. And again, it's ultimately your decision of what you want to do. If you want to keep it as is, as we had this past school year, or we would change it to what we propose, or unless there's something different. So again, just looking at schools in our area, it is pretty lit up what schools have in there.
So is there, so I'm clear, are we, is there a concern enough to request a change or alteration?
No, I guess just bringing up the point.
Mr. Bartel, does our current code allow the administration any leeway? They see that the policy is, I guess, being shortcutted to step in?
There is not anything stated in our handbook that would be, that would say that, no.
I think the nuance that would have to occur is you would have to be between sports seasons when the violation occurred, right? So if you were between, let's say, volleyball and girls' basketball, then there would have to be a determination made on whether or not the student was really going to go out for girls' basketball, or if they were just going out for girls' basketball to get the code violation, code violation out of the way. If they had already joined the sport, then the code violation would be administered for that specific sport. So it's only, it's only kind of between the seasons that some discretion might have to take place.
And thank you for bringing it up. And you have, like, for example, we'll have winter sports sign up in the fall still. So we fall back to, you know, the students that attend that meeting in early to mid-October saying they want to play a winter sport. And that really helps third year because if students don't show up to that meeting, they don't connect with the coach, and you know they're not really signed up to play that sport, and then they want to sign up to play for it. In between seasons, we kind of can connect to the thought that they're doing that to serve the suspension.
I think it's an improvement. I will move to approve the proposed change to the co-curricular handbook for next year.
Is there a second? Okay, motion on the floor by Mr. Dolphin, seconded by Mr. Yurgis to approve the co-curricular handbook changes for 2025-2026 as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion will carry on a 5-2 vote. Brings us to action item G, 2025-2026 Declaration of Educational Standards. You have a number of standards that are listed within your former packet. It's recommended that these be utilized for the Waterloo School District and also posted on the district website and in the district office for a public notification. Any questions in regards to the standards that are listed for approval? So move for approval.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So I've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Craig, seconded by Ms. Kwame to approve the 2025-2026 Declaration of Educational Standards as presented, including posting the standards on the school district website and in the district office for public notification. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a 7-0. Brings us to action item H, which we had a report on earlier in the meeting, the board reports on the curriculum and textbook adoption. It's recommended that we approve the Workplace Communications, the Basics by Pearson to be adopted into our curriculum. Again, the proposal, as was listed or given, we were given details prior, this purchase total goes to $4,137.23. And if I heard correctly, that allows for 25 copies of said text and we currently have enrolled about 20 students. Awesome. Move for approval.
Cummings, a second.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Craig, seconded by Ms. Cummings to approve the adoption of the Workplace Communications, the Basics by Pearson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Brings us to discussion item I, can we define any ready? Or was it power for changes? See water?
Yeah, so August tends to be a little bit busier, board meeting for us, as we roll out all the rest of the things to get ready for the school year. But Scott really wants to spend some time with you in the summer here. So if it's okay with the board, we'll put Scott on the agenda for August, and we can get our business items out of the way as efficiently as possible, and then spend some time with Scott. Does that sound okay to everybody?
Absolutely.
So we plan for that on August 13th, the regular meeting. All right, moving right along. I will make the motion to move into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.5 or 1G and F for the, everything listed in our posting. Is there a second to that motion? And that is your roll call vote.
Craig, yes.
Kwame, yes.
Dolphin, yes.
Schneider, yes.
Farah, yes.
Cummings, yes.
Yurgis, yes.
All right, let the record chill at 7:11. We will take a brief recess and allow the cameras to be taken down, and then we'll get into our closed session. Thank you.